Good morning. Welcome to the Wayne County Board of Commissioners Agenda Meeting. This time, as we go along through our meeting today, you'll see some things that may be a little bit different because of the coronavirus and the things that have been suggested. I also want to mention that Commissioner Joe Gurley is joining us by phone. Commissioner Gurley, you hear me? Commissioner Gurley? Have we lost him, sir?
Yes, sir. I hear you well. Just got to think a few times and kind of get used to taking this phone off the mute. But I'm good. I'm hearing you good. And thank y'all for allowing me to join in by teleconference this morning. I appreciate it. And more importantly, and as important, is we keep all of our citizens safely as possible and keep them out of harm's way. Thank you, Ray.
Yes. And also, we'll have more to say about this at the 9:00 session. But as you can see, we have a vacant seat this morning, Commissioner John Bell. So we'll have a lot more to say about that at the 9:00 session. Our invocation this morning would be by Dr. Glenn Phillips, Senior Pastor at First Baptist Church of Goldsboro at the 9:00 session. I'm going to give you the story behind this, as to why Dr. Phillips is here for the second meeting in a row. Commissioner Acock has the Pledge of Allegiance, and we have the approval of the minutes, the discussion and adjustment of agenda. And Mr. Honeycutt?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The only adjustment of the agenda that I'm aware of, we have no walk-ons, but we would like to move our public comment, which is now listed close to the bottom of the agenda, after Board of Commissioners Committee reports, move that back to right after the Appointment Committee.
Okay.
Mr. Gurley, but we also have a corrected agreement due to changes at the last minute that I'd like to pass out now for. This is no change, but just the corrected agreement for the Wayne County Development Line.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Chairman, were there any changes in this?
There were just some stylistic changes that you and I had spoken about earlier.
Okay.
But as far as investment jobs, those numbers are not changed.
Okay.
Okay. After approval of adjustment of the agenda, we'll have a special presentation. We'll have a motion to adopt Resolution 2010, a resolution honoring the life of Commissioner John M. Bell. We have asked the family to be here, but they cannot attend for some family issues. But we will read that. We'll have an update from Animal Services Director Graham Price. Then we'll have a special recognition of the Wayne County Sheriff's Office staff members, Captain Sean Harris and Jamie Sturgill, and Information Technology Staff members Chris Stone and Justin Jones. Then number four, we'll have a motion to approve North Carolina 811 Safe Digging Month Proclamation. Number five will be a motion to approve Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans Proclamation. Number six, motion to approve Child Abuse Prevention Month Proclamation. Number seven, motion to approve 2020 Donate Life Month Proclamation. And Dr. Sandra Cooley will be here to read that.
Do the other proclamations, four, five, and six, that we need to redo?
Yes, sir. We don't know if anybody will be here for the 811. I'm planning to read. We're hoping Bill Graham will be here for the Veterans Day. If he's not here, I'll be glad to read. And then Carol was going to read the Child Abuse Prevention.
Ricky Davis is normally here for that, sir, but...
They have a meeting this morning involving the COVID-19 issue, so she asked me to relay a message from her.
Okay. And you'd said on number seven, the Donate Life Proclamation, somebody's going to be here for that?
Dr. Sandra Cooley. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
When we get to that, I would also like to make a few comments at that time, please, either before or after.
Yes, sir.
Probably after, you wouldn't you think?
Probably, yeah. Yeah, I'll ask for any comments.
Then after special presentations, we have Appointment Committee.
Yes, sir. We do have two new appointees and one reappointment today.
Okay. Then we will have Public Comment. And then at 9:15, a public hearing to receive public comments regarding potential economic incentives for Project Insure, which is the Atlantic Casualty Insurance Company over at Park East. And again, after the public hearing, the Board of Commissioners may vote on potential economic incentives for Project Insure following the public hearing. And again, Mark Pope, our Economic Development Director, will be here for this.
Okay.
And then, under Unfinished Business, number one, motion to approve Atlantic Emergency Solutions. It's the lowest responsible bidder for the EMS remounts, and we've got that resolved and moving forward. And then we will turn it to Consent Agenda, and we'll start with Budget Amendments. And I'll turn that out.
Budget Amendments begin on page 19. And I do have several, so I will try to be as quickly as possible. The Solid Waste Department, they are asking to reallocate regular part-time salaries to full-time salaries and retirement. This was for a position approved in the budget, but the money needs to be reallocated. For the Health Department, they have family planning fees that were coded to the incorrect line item originally, so they are making the correction and putting it in the right revenue line item. For the Sheriff's Office, they are requesting to anticipate and appropriate $5,024 in For the Sheriff's Office, they are asking to reappropriate prior year donations and sales from their calendar ad sales and public donations from the prior year in the amount For the Sheriff's Office, they are asking to anticipate usage of fund balance in the amount of $30,000. This is to offset an increased number of transports for involuntary commitments. For the Health Department, they are asking to reallocate $17,609.18, and this is for the interim Health Director. He is being paid not through salaries but through a contract, so they are just moving those monies to the correct line item. Cooperative Extension, they're asking to anticipate and appropriate $300 for their horticulture program in fees and then offsetting that with the cost of the program. Then you have three, I believe it is for the Health Department, numbers 350, 351, and 352. This is their opioid action plan grant monies. They originally budgeted all the revenue in one line item. They've since decided to split that out between the original sources, so that is what they're doing. They're just reallocating those and moving those monies to the individual revenue line So that brings us to number 353 for the Health Department. They've received additional grant funds from East Point for the opioid management program in the amount of $49,984. For Literacy, they are asking to anticipate and appropriate $4,036.88. Their board approved a part-time position, and they are paid through our payroll, but they do reimburse us fully for that. So that will be a net zero to us. For the Staff Attorney, he is requesting to reappropriate revenues. These are related to foreclosure cases that were pending at June 30, and those have since settled, so he's asking to bring those monies forward and pay the bills associated with those cases. For Social Services, they are requesting to reallocate funds and anticipate additional funds from the state in the amount of $40,331. This is to cover the remainder of the fiscal year in helping them meet their memorandum of understanding with the state, and they've also got several vacancies that they're dealing with, so they're having to use temporary help. For the Sheriff's Office, they are requesting to anticipate and appropriate $80.83 controlled substance monies received. For 4H After School, they are anticipating $11,900 for their after-school program. I think that program attendance has increased, so they anticipate having more staff and costs related with that this year. Then you have two for the Staff Attorney, number 374 and 375. He has overcollected in those line items and is asking to appropriate those revenues that he's overcollected so that he can reimburse the correct expenditure line items. For Facilities, they are asking to reallocate $37,364.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I figured you were about to... Let me go back to the Staff Attorney. Can we get just a quick explanation on overcollection?
I can. Good morning.
I mean, you're so good, you're overcollecting taxes.
Just to clarify, there's no such thing as overcollecting.
I agree.
When we say overcollecting, that was just the projected revenues for the year, and we've already exceeded what our projections were. So we just need to increase that number, so that way we can account for all the money that we've brought in. So in particular with the...
So you're doing such a good job. You've actually collected more than we budgeted.
You said it, yes, sir.
That sounds a little better.
That's right. But in particular, the surplus funds, we sold a property probably about a month, two months ago that went, it was about 135 acres, so there was a large amount of proceeds that had to be deposited with the clerks, so that's why that number's so big.
I see you did not write this budget amendment or it had been a little bit more explicit. Thank you.
Thank you.
For Facility Services, on page 55, they are requesting to reallocate funds from their capital outlet equipment line item in the amount of $37,364. This is to purchase a new dump truck. I think the old one has died.
Yes, this is a rebound that we're looking at. The truck right now is old diesel and it's just shot.
For the Sheriff's Office, they are asking to anticipate $15,307.48 insurance refunds. And then finally, the last budget amendment is for the 911 call center. So this budget amendment is doing a couple of things. We are reallocating funds from the Buildings Line Item that is not associated with the 911 grant to cover some additional architect fees and engineering costs that were not originally budgeted. That's the $25,533 you see there. And then you'll see also fund balance appropriated of $425,000 requesting to be transferred to the 911 fund. This is covering a few things. So it is helping to cover the data center, security, and audiovisual equipment. I've also included a small contingency in there for the bills that maybe the 911 Center doesn't cut, the 911 Board doesn't cover exactly as we had anticipated. I don't know if that will cover it or not. We'll just kind of have to wait and see. This budget amendment is based on the assumption that the 911 Board will reallocate the funds as we've requested, moving all the grant money to construction, and then the rest of it would be out of county funds. But they have not approved that, so we are still waiting for that approval, and it may be April or later. So I did want to put that disclaimer, because that, depending on what they do, it may change the way we budget for this project.
Any reason for a holdup?
I think when we originally asked for it to be put on, when Chris originally asked for it to be put on the agenda, we thought it would, you know, be put on the agenda, and then they would talk about it, and then he received a response from Poki Harris, who is the director, that it had to go through several subcommittees, through legal, things like that, and that that was going to take some time before they could get it on their agenda.
Mr. Chairman? Yes. I have some questions. You want to do it now, you want to do it in the regular meeting, or?
Well, it has to do with the budget amendment. We can do it now. Is that okay with the board?
Okay. Is, you know, we're getting budget amendments on the 911 Center, and my first question is, is this the last budget amendment we're going to get on the 911 Center?
I don't think, I don't personally think it will be. I mean, a lot of it depends on the 911 Board and what they decide to do with our grant. And then you have another piece of this with 911 restricted funds that is separate from the grant, and we do not have definitive answers on a lot of the pieces whether they'll cover it or not. And then there are pieces of it that we know they won't cover, but the project is not completed, and we still have several months till it's completed. So at this point, I mean, I would be kind of surprised if it was our last budget amendment, but I couldn't tell you for sure.
What, the pieces you mentioned that weren't in the budget, what are those pieces?
Well, the piece, like for today, the pieces that we're talking about is the data center, the security, and audiovisual equipment.
Okay, so what you're saying is the data center, is that what's driving the cost up?
For this particular budget amendment, yes, sir. And Ryan Preble?
Is that data center, is that required to get this building up and running?
I'll have to defer to Ryan for that.
I mean, I don't remember a data center being involved in this when we started the 911 Center.
Well, to be quite honest, I wasn't involved when we first started.
Well, that's beside the point. I'm just, I'm looking at, I'm looking at dollars and cents.
Okay. Can you give me the question one more time, and I'll try to answer it the best I can?
Is this data center driving the cost of 911 Center up?
From the original budget, yes.
Okay.
$350,000 in IT in contingency. That's correct.
All right. Do we already have a data center?
At the 911 Center? No.
No, do we have one period?
Yes, sir, you have two.
Okay. And we've got to have one at the 911 Center, it can't be tied into one of the other data centers?
No, sir. You have fiber running down there. There's a couple of items that have to be there regardless because of the physical location of it. You spent upwards of, well, currently you spent 600, you're looking to spend about $150,000 on the fiber that runs through there. That was a part of the original fiber loop plan, was to roll the 911 Center into that. As a part of that, there needs to be equipment at the other end of that to facilitate that.
Well, I just, I reckon I'm old school, but I just don't, I don't understand why. And you say you weren't involved in it, and I understand that, but this is getting out of hand. I mean, the cost of this 911 Center is going through the roof, and it's not the actual what we had approved to start with. And I'm not saying this equipment's not needed, but I'm not happy with these budget amendments and figures like this.
And we knew that the budget amendments were coming, because if you remember, that the county has only allocated at the beginning $4 million for the entire project, and we, the contract that we have for construction is $4 million. So that does include architecture, engineering, any of those soft costs as well, or any of the things that 911 doesn't cover inside the building. So we did get the grant from the 911 Board for a million two, or a million five. Again, $350,000 of that is going to Michigan Critical to help administer the grant. So we have gone out and tried to seek additional grant funding. We are going to still apply, and we have told Michigan Critical that there will be another application to the 911 Board, asking for additional funds for this project.
Okay, that's fine. My next question is, what we approved initially for the 911 Center, the building and all, is that in budget?
The building, I think there had been some minor, but, you know, again, the contract that we had from, who has our contract for?
Jackson Builders.
Jackson Builders, was right at $4 million. And we budgeted right at $4 million, and again, that didn't include engineering or any of the soft costs associated with it. So there will be some costs over, and so I think there has been some change orders, but not to a large extent that we're looking at.
You did a real good job of getting around my question. Is the building in budget or over budget, the actual 911 part?
There has been, I think there's been a couple of budget amendments that Kendall has approved that's over the $4 million. But again, we also didn't budget the soft costs associated with that or for the internal piece as well. Again, the $4 million is just for the building.
Why didn't we budget for it? I mean, and I'm not pointing fingers.
It's a very, we, I think originally, there was an assumption that the 911 funds, the restricted funds, would cover most everything that we needed within that building, and that assumption was wrong.
Well, we got to do a better job of assuming.
Yes, sir.
I mean, because I am not happy with what's going on at 911 Center. I mean, the building's going to be great and all, but all this extra cost, I mean, somebody, some worse should have caught part of this, not necessarily all of it, but, and I'm not saying the equipment's not needed, but we've got a job to spend the tax dollars as sparingly as we can.
Yes, sir.
And in this case, I don't think we're doing it.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. Chairman? Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Commissioner, for bringing that up. As Commissioners, we make decisions based upon information given to us. Let me say that again. As Commissioners, we make decisions based upon information given to us. Now, the information given to this board was that if you allocate the $4 million, and we give a contract for that, that is what it is going to cost. All of the equipment inside this building will be covered by 911 grant dollars. Now, that was what was told us. Instead, what we find is that we're close to budget on the building, but we're having hundreds of thousands of dollars that we're having to come up with because we're not getting the grant money from 911. So, I mean, I think we're going to be close to $1 million that this board's going to have to find to fund this equipment that we thought was all going to be paid by 911. I'm guessing it's going to be more like a million and a half. Well, it may be. It may be. My point is, we're making a decision to go forward with a project based upon a $4 million figure that's going to end up being five to five and a half million. That's not right, and we've got to do something to cure that. Now that said, on the other side of this, since we are into a discussion with the 911 Board where they are not funding this equipment that we were told they were, I think we need to reach out to our legislators and get them involved to try to help us navigate this, because one and a half million dollars on our budget, that's a big hit. So I would just comment that the information we get on the front end to make decisions are so important, that is accurate, as accurate as possible. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And we're not saying that the equipment's not needed now. We want the nicest 911 Center east of 995. We're not saying it's not needed, but my rub is, is these large budget amendments that we didn't know were coming. And I'm not pointing the fingers at nobody. I mean, I don't know who dropped the ball. I mean, you know, there's been a lot of changes in the last couple of years, but I'm just saying that we've got to do a better job on how we're spending this money.
Yes, sir.
Any other comments?
Well, I would just, I would like to first say that the projections, I feel like, that were made by county personnel who were working on that, was working on adding up the dollar figures that they saw at that time. I would just like to remind my colleagues that the reason you have a category called Budget Amendments is because everything cannot be anticipated 100% on the front end. From the very beginning, I've always thought that this 911 matched a board somewhere in Raleigh, appointed by someone, had too much of a reach. Only way we can cure that is to work from the ground roots up through our legislators and complain that items like what we're dealing with in this stead does not need to be such a, such a big check in Raleigh that these kind of things can't be adjusted. And everything that I've heard about the 911 Board who makes these improvements is, we do not have any recourse except just to accept what they send to us. So I just want us to keep that in mind as we move forward on projects and the budget amendment aspect. Almost every project that we've done, unanticipated furniture, I've heard that so many times, that it's just not something figured in whenever they do the, whenever contractors do their estimates, unless we, in fine print, say furniture, door knobs, pils of shoppings, or everything else. So I was relieved of that.
Commissioner Gurley, do you have any comments on this?
Excuse me. No, I'm just listening.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, Mr. Honeycutt?
And then next, we have applications for present use value that have been approved by our Tax Department. Next is a motion to approve utilitiesman agreement between the County of Wayne and Piedmont Natural Gas, and that information is in your packet. And Debbie Hodrick with Piedmont Natural Gas is here if you have any questions.
Any questions from any Councilmember?
I really don't know what questions to ask on that one, to be honest with you.
You want to make, you want to make a comment on that?
Thank you for making time for us this morning. And, yes, so this easement is for Piedmont Natural Gas. There already exists a gas line there on Spruce Streets, 208 Spruce Street, and we just need to add a piece of equipment. And so, since you guys are the landowners of that, of that area, we'd like to be able to acquire an easement for the area of that equipment.
Okay. Any questions from, I'm going to take this time to put a plug in, we need natural gas in Wayne, up in Piedmont. I knew you had a reason for bringing them up here. Any questions from?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr.
Chairman. I would like just to ask your question so that the public can hear your answer. What is the process and are the limitations for running gas lines through residential communities? Because based upon comparisons, and I don't have them exact, but for years, my daughter was on, just happened to be in the right place to be able to get natural gas. A block away, I'm using barbed wire, and there was this vast difference in there. So would you just say for the public consumption, what is the decision made upon you all not making it more available to the average citizen?
Unfortunately, you might be a little outside of...
Unfortunately, you might be a little outside of our depth on that question. We're real estate representatives and don't have much say in the availability of natural gas or business decisions with, in regard to distribution service. I know that I could certainly get you in touch with those individuals who can tell you about upcoming service and who you would need to call in order to get service to your house in the area. And, and so what we're talking about here is actually a transmission line rather than a distribution line. So those transmission lines would not service dwellings, they would carry large volumes of gas to different areas for demand and step down to be taken to distribution service levels.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I guess the main thing here is, Mr. Parker, Mr. Neal, if y'all are good with this, I'm, I'm good with it, but, you know, I'm quite sure y'all have looked at it.
Yes, we, we have, and I had Kendall look at it to make sure he didn't have problems with it.
So y'all are good with it?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm good.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, number four is motion to approve relief from charge of collections, insolvents in motor vehicles, and Alan is here if you have any questions. This is just our standard write-off. The required under statute, okay? Number five is motion to approve preliminary plat for Gander Lake Phase 6 as recommended by the Wayne County Planning Board, and Barry is here for that.
All right, good morning. I'll try and run this through this really quickly. This is Gander Lake Phase 6. It's a preliminary plat. They are proposing 140 lots on Piper Princeton Road. It's right there at the Johnston Wayne County line. The existing Gander Lake is up on Piper Princeton Road, just be back behind there. With 140 lots now, let me just say, this preliminary is a resubmital of a previous approval. There was an approval for this area behind, back in 2012. Some revisions were done in 2017, but basically they're redesigning this area, they're adding a little bit more land back there. So really, in terms of new lots above what was previously approved is about 31. So they're really just adding 31 lots to what was previously approved, but this preliminary plat is for a total of 140. Since this is a preliminary, there are no improvements at this time. They're just basically getting this approval so they can move forward with their planning phase, and at some point they'll come back with individual phases once they start getting those online for further review. So this is the, I guess, the start of the process, as you can, if you can say. Planning Board has reviewed this plat, they do recommend approval, and I'll be glad to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions? Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I don't have a question about that, I just want to ask our director, a question has been asked of me. Has Wayne County established a mortarium or a limit or a closing opportunity for solar facilities?
Well, for solar facilities, a mortarium?
Have, have that, have we, have we brought that project to a close in Wayne County? Are there, do you understand my question? Are there opportunities for folk to still come to this board and apply for whatever paperwork necessary to do solar facilities?
There is, yes, sir. We still do have that ability. We have an ordinance, of course, with some, you know, guidelines and how they should be designed, but yes, folks do still have that opportunity to go through that process before it is born.
And it's a possibility that the person who asked that question may have been reading some of the stipulations and so forth, but the, the direct answer to that is that the possibility still exists for a person to come and...
To your? Yep.
To your department, apply for and receive an opportunity to put in a solar facility in Wayne County.
That's correct. It is possible.
That was the direct question I think was asked of me, and I promised that I would try to get it. Direct announces would be, I think, but I think you did it.
Yep.
Okay, any other? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Barry. Then next, we have number six, motion to establish a public hearing on April 21st, 2020, at 9:30 a.m. in the Commissioners' Meeting Room to receive public comments on a request to rezonate 59.64 acres out of 191.53 acre tract at 2253 Bill Lane Boulevard, identified as tax parcel 3517315753, and owned by Lane Farms Incorporated, from Residential Agriculture 20 to Airport Industry in Indian Springs Township, as recommended by the Planning Department. And that's Barry as well.
Okay. And I'll just add to that, that we have received comments from Seymour Johnson Air Force Base on this request, and there are no compatibility issues from the base. The Planning Board has reviewed this and recommends approval as well, and so we are just asking that the board schedule a public hearing for April 21st. That'll give us time to advertise, post the properties, send notices to adjacent property owners and so forth.
I don't, I can understand the rezoning and I can understand the, the industry part, but I don't see where airport's got anything to do with this other than Seymour Johnson if we've got to clear, I just, I don't understand that part.
Right. It's, Airport Industry is one of the zoning districts that we have. It's not really used often, but it's for, I guess, areas that are in close proximity to an airport. That district was designed for, to provide more compatibility with industry around or near airports, so there was less of an impact. I felt this was more appropriate in this area as opposed to heavy industrial.
Okay.
Because of heavy industrial, and even light industrial are actually more intense than the airport industry. That shit was designed for situations near an airport where it have lit mainly the base so it would have less of an impact, so.
Okay. Thank you, Barry.
All right. And then number seven, we have a motion to adopt Resolution 202012, resolution amending the position classification and pay plan for Wayne County. Again, this is clarifying some positions that we have in public affairs, and there was one other, sorry, can't even find the page. Literacy, that's right, literacy as well, and, and again, literacy is a pass-through. I think they were making a part-time or full-time in literacy. Yeah.
Yes, sir, the literacy council is adding a position, but it's a fully reimbursable position, so it's not going to be a cost to the county. Also, we updated the titles on the pay plan that show MRAC, and then we changed those titles to reflect Maxwell Center titles, and we made one correction to the Public Affairs Department.
So no increasing, it was just changing the title name?
We were cleaning up the titles. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You didn't give yourself a raise.
Did you give us a raise? We ought either.
And then under new business, motion to approve Dell Incorporated as a vendor of choice for County of Wayne 911 center UPS and network racks, and again, if the budget amendment is approved, these are part of the, the 911 center that we would like, or equipment that we need to purchase.
This is part of the, of the budget amendment that we've already addressed?
Yes, sir. And then number two, motion to approve the North Carolina Association and County Commissioner Risk Management Pool for insurance coverage for the County of Wayne. And then number three, catch a glimpse video by Public Affairs for the association.
We discussed this, number two, in the regular meeting?
No. Well, we'll do it in closed session then.
Right.
And then county managers' comments, Board of Commissioners' committee reports, public comments, closed session, board, or, or, excuse me, public comments was moved, closed session, Board of Commissioners' information, and then adjournment.
Okay. We have time for any closed session, Mr. Parker?
No.
May I make a recommendation that you simply take a break because when we go to closed session, we will be shutting everything down?
That's right.
And I'd prefer not to have to do that right this moment?
Okay.
For just a few minutes.
Okay, so if, if no one has any other comments, we'll take a break and then we'll come back, start our nine o'clock session, okay?